Okay. We're here for December 16th. Meeting of the Arundel Planning Board.
We try 17?
It's the 17th, yes, we'll try the 17th. That works. It is 7:07 PM and we'll start with a roll call.
Tom again.
I'm again.
Bob.
Rich Kenon.
John DeGeneres.
Roger Moore.
Todd Redwood Planner.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We have on the agenda tonight. Approval of minutes for the December 10th, 2015. Regular meeting. The sidewalk of December 5th at Motorland. And the only actionable item we have is a review of the format for the zoning ordinance.
I think my license is signed at some point.
Yeah, I forgot to bring it. Sorry.
So let's start with this.
I can go get it if you guys want.
The December 5th. Sidewalk minutes out at Motorland.
I make a motion, we approve the. Minutes of the sidewalk at Motorland for December 5th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. The only thing I see on here that needs to get fixed is that my name's not on here. And I was actually there.
Jamie didn't have you down.
I know it.
They were there before me.
It must've made quite a bit of pressure.
I must have.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we'll make that a modification.
That's quite okay. Is there anything anyone else has?
An issue I raised last night, just for consistency, adjournment. I don't care which we use, either adjournment or adjournment, they're both correct terms, but we should use one in all of them.
Which would you prefer, the you or, with you or sans you?
With you.
You prefer you? So it's all about you?
It's all about you.
No, it's all about you.
You it is. We'll go adjourn.
Yes, that is the right one.
The other ones are out, actually, the both are.
We shouldn't use them.
But one is more correct than the other.
As far as this board is concerned?
Yes. Any, any further discussion on the sidewalk? Hearing none, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
And corrected.
And cor- as corrected, yes.
And I abstain because I wasn't impressed.
Okay. Onto the minutes of, that was five to one, with five with one extension. Onto December 10th.
Can I move to approve?
Second.
That motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yeah. Page five of six, the last sentence. The applicant's consultant gave all members of the board who need to add permission. To enter and inspect the property of.
Yeah, the very last line.
All right, good point. Give all members of the board permission. Oh.
Wait. Page five of six.
Five left.
The, the very last sentence.
On the page.
Good catch, Mr. Phil.
And then again, the adjournment and adjournment, you want to make that consistent?
Yes, sir.
It'll be adjournment, not adjourn, right?
Okay, is there any other corrections that anyone sees, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes as corrected?
Yep.
And I have to abstain from that. So again, it's five in favor and one of session. And then we're on to the land use ordinance review. I believe we left off at section 10. And we just repeat, we're, we're not interested in the indentations or the. The format, the format numbering and all of that fun stuff and the text size have already been pointed out.
Uniformity.
Yes, the uniformity will be taken care of though, because we've already given the town plan a direction in terms of all of that. So we're looking more in terms of the way it is. The titles and, and things of that nature, correct. So. We're looking at shoreline zoning.
Are, yeah, are we, are we gonna, or are you taking care of all of the references to, it's like, you know, section.
Yes.
On page 122, it references section 10-581, which doesn't exist here.
Then 581?
Real good.
This is on page 122.
I should bring up, because town taught it different.
The man uses in the shoreline over there.
Even in these minutes.
122, man uses in the shoreline.
It references section 10-581, 83, 82. And there's only 10-5 here.
Okay.
So, do we need to double check all of those, or are you gonna do that on your own?
Yeah, these, with that. Should be 10. Oh, wait a minute. 10-5, it should be 10-7. Instead of 10-7, 5, it should be 10-7, because it's referring to the uses that are specified in the use list below.
Right, 10-7.1.
So it'd be 10-7.1. It's, it's 10-7.11. Because it's referencing all the, within the, 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 the resource protection and stream protection districts.
Well, it's not so much so critical as to what it is, the fact that.
They, they don't coincide, yeah. I got that marked, coincide.
Because I think that's the biggest thing here, that we have to double check unless you're gonna just look at every one of those references automatically.
I always do automatic, what I, what I basically do. Because this has changed several times, that's how these things happen, but, um, what I, what I do is I'll go to these references and then, um, wherever I find those doesn't work, I'll just do a replace. Where it goes throughout the whole document and replaces the right one.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
So we don't have to worry about those, because there's a lot of them here.
Yes, in this one, there's a lot, because we follow, basically, the, what I did here is I, you know, I had to take out the chapter 1000. And if you remember, the chapter 1000 that we followed was extremely convoluted. It's just as bad as floodplain. And, um, and so I had to restructure this in the same format that we're doing all the other ones. And I think I mixed up my numbers at various points, so I will recheck those again. Yeah, there's a few more. Set material with that to do, right? Let's see.
Three.
Yeah, there's. Yeah, there, there's a number of them, so, because, because it's called, here it says 10.8.4 above, and it's in 10.8.2. I think it can be about. Yeah, there's, there's just a bunch of, of little stuff like that, but in terms of the way the formatting itself goes.
You know, this is major departure from the way the state does do it. If you have your ordinance, I don't, but if you have your ordinance where you look at shoreline zone, which is section 6. Oh, is it 6, uh, 6-1? Nope. See, that's not even.
Shoreland 10.
6-1.
Yeah, it's 6-4. 6-4 in your ordinance, you know how it's set up compared to how this is set up. And it gets funky. Because we had to break it down, if it's using the same system, we had to do it in permitted uses, conditional uses. And then we had to do space and bulk, and then we had to go to, you know, to setbacks and dimensional standards and exceptions to it there. And then, then we had to have a whole section of non-conformity. What I did is I pulled the non-conformity that used to be out of section 5 in the ordinance and put it in here. Why have non-conformity in shoreline zone and a whole nother section in the other part of it, in, in the front part?
So is that included in grandfathering?
The grandfather ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only we don't call grandfather. Call non-conformity. So the courts. But yes, they're all in here. But I do have to check you right. Now here's, um, now it does make reference back, and notice there's, there's a reference back to section 5. Yeah, and I have to refer back to some of these sections, because I couldn't include them all.
I'm being smart when I just said that. But is there somewhere in there? Okay. In reference to. Description of the thing else, because I'm trying to add something of the word grandfather.
No.
I'm just.
No, that's, that's a, that's a field, so that's a common term that's applied when in legal, in legal issues, it is not, it's called non-conformity, legally non-conforming.
Well, no, I'm just saying it, why are you saying it if it was, it was a use that was allowed?
It's a use of pre-existing zoning, it's called legally non-conforming.
I, I'm just thinking of something of how we were trying to go circle around and circle around last night. If there was. Anything in there, either, either for now or in the future. Clarification.
It's all there, it's just under legally non-conforming, it's in our non-conforming.
Right, because we've, we've done it in, in the past where we've said that if that business is in operation, they will be granted a, they will be considered a legally non-conforming use and allowed to continue in operation. The description of, the word grandfather or the, or the description of what it means is nowhere in the ordinance.
I'm just thinking, like, for clarity.
For clarity's sake, when we redo the ordinance, when we, when we go. We'll get the format passed and then when we come back, we have to deal with some additions, we have to deal, you know, we still have the residential zone to do. And there's some cleanups we want to do, and I think one of the cleanups we probably want to do is also clean up the, uh, non-conformity, because there's some better language than that.
That's why I'm throwing you out as thought. I mean, I was being smart at first, but I mean.
I know you're, but I, it's a legitimate point to make it more crystal clear. Can we make things more crystal clear? Yeah. And we've done that in several places here, just in titles, you know, permits required. No question, there's no question anymore, permit is required to proceed with these. And we'll, we'll probably put in some different language in various places. I'll, I'll propose it, you tell me if you like it better than existing language. To make it a little clearer. To make, to punch it home, so there's no.
That's not gonna be for this next vote.
I'm not, I'm not gonna shoot for that.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, yeah.
I mean, I'm not trying to add.
Once we get this finished, I mean, we're gonna go to town meeting.
Okay, yeah.
We're gonna ask for special town meeting, we're not gonna go in June.
Let, let's go back onto, onto this. Now, there is something, if you would look at 10.8.2.1.
10, how about it? 10.8.2?
Yeah, it's on. Page 129.
And two, one expansions?
Yes, would you read the, very, well, it says, I, I'm gonna just start, it says, uh, after obtaining a permit from the planning board, be expanded within existing residential structures or within, within expansion of such structures as allotted in section 10.8.4 above. 10.8.4 can't come before 10.8.2.
I preserved the language, that was a very fine there.
I know, but I looked.
It's a good point, it's a good point.
Where's you on, uh, the 129?
Well, the way it's referred to.
Todd is, if, if.
Is that. Yeah, he's, he's gonna check them all, I just thought that was amusing.
With 10.7.
I have a formatting issue on page 134, that should be made to look like a table on number seven. That should be like the other.
Yeah, you want that, the one lined?
Right. Make all the tables consistent.
All tables lined.
And then, if nobody else has anything in between page 138, 139, I've got a question. This is 10-9-13 and 10-9-14, one says to be repealed and the other one says effective on, so.
Yeah. We are in a position now where, um. One of these, I'm trying to remember which one is, hold on, I'm gonna go to the beginning. The action has occurred, because we did this in two, in 2010. And there was a tipping point where X number of communities, I think it had to be like 75% of the communities had to adopt the shoreline zoning ordinance and the timber provisions. And agreed to go with the provision that the state, basically Department of Conservation or Department of Forestry, would take over all regulation of timber harvesting within the Resource Protection District that would be taken out of the municipal, municipal, um, hands. But those municipalities wanted to, to do that, so we had to put in. Sections that would be, um, eventually, uh. Basically sunsetted because of legislative action. And I, we haven't taken them out yet. It, it has occurred, and we elected, as you recall, we had a long discussion about, we elected to, uh, to defer all, all regulations of the Resource Protection District for timber harvesting to the state.
So when we present this, this is going to be.
Exempt, right. Yeah, we should delete that, I mean.
We, well.
Both.
I, I agree that, I agree that we should, but just, and, and I don't know if you would notice, but the, the reference in 10-3-2. Is to 10-G-13.
Yeah.
And we're talking 10-9-13. They're just.
10-G was the original.
Was it?
Yeah, that was the original reference, right.
Okay.
So we're gonna be pulling 10-9-13 out, so there wouldn't have to be any, are we gonna keep 10-3-2 in there? If it's already occurred in the past, we don't need it?
Yeah, would there be a reason to keep that in there? The automatic repeal and enactment?
The next, already occurred.
The conditions of 10-3-2, wait a minute, yeah. What are the conditions of 10-3-2?
Uh, 10-G-13 is repealed on the statutory date established under 38 MRSA, section 438d5, at which time section 10-14 becomes effective. Until such time, 10-13 is repealed, 10-14 is not in effect.
Okay, so we, that, that deletion then doesn't actually have to go to town vote.
That's right, because it's already.
Right.
So which one are we deleting?
10-13, 10-9-13.
So then.
And 10-9-14 steps in.
We'd have to come through a key.
So.
Yeah, probably.
I wanna make sure I did this with your foreknowledge. So we're gonna delete this.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put an X, according to 10-3-2, yes.
Well, we don't have to put an X and.
No.
Let's just pull it out.
We just have to pull it out because it doesn't exist anymore. It's already been, it's been sunsetted by, by legislative action.
The appeal is already happened.
And also by town vote.
By town.
And at the same time, we take 10-3-2 out?
Like, we don't need that anymore.
Because it's referencing something that has already occurred in the past and no longer needs to be there. Well.
Yeah.
Because it references a specific statute, uh, in the state ordinance.
So then, 10-3-1 wouldn't be one, it would just be.
10-3.
10-3.
Yeah. Yes, maybe just 10-3. Okay. All right, so 10-3, one will be gone. And it'll just remain 10-3.
No, that's fine, I thought you should take out 10-3-1, no, you're just taking out the one, not the.
No, not the rest of it.
Yeah, the one, yeah, go ahead.
And just put that in, 10-3-2.
I was, um. I would, suggestion, I would have a little, a little note in the presentation. That's a big change of what the people are wanting to see.
It should be clarified, yeah.
Yeah, so that when we were saying, you know, we've moved all of the content over, with the exception of things like this. Here's an example, we took all of this out because the town already voted on it, it was sunsetted by the thing, and you only find 10-3, the others were moved already by the town.
That's a good point.
You know, I, I.
Who noted and overworked the text?
Correct. Almost like.
Or, or, you have, you have that in, when you're presenting, who's ever gonna present the new.
You are.
Right, I know, be it.
That's true.
At, at town meeting.
It's almost like those, you know, this page was left intentionally blank. With the explanation as to why.
It's a summary report. I usually know it.
Yeah, I, I mean, because that's a big, I mean, if anybody really goes through the reg, they're gonna see a whole bunch that didn't get moved over. And, and this one is special.
Yeah.
Um, so I think.
Well, we can leave it and put a big X there. Makes it messy, but.
See, I think it should come out, I'm not arguing.
Or you could put a watermark over it that says deleted by town vote with the date.
That, that would. Could. But if we're gonna keep consistent, we do strikeouts.
But this is not really a strikeout.
We're not proposing that this be eliminated, it's already been. And you know, the thing that's interesting, if you read the ordinance, or read the warrant, I mean, if you read the warrant, it always says, with exception, you know, to approve this with addition, with corrections, spelling, punctuation and number. And this in a way would be exactly the same sort of thing, because it's sunsetted, it's gone, it's expired, it's expired essentially.
I'm just saying be prepared.
To explain.
Yeah, because there will be that question, how come that's missing?
And would he become the meeting?
Wouldn't it be the case that, it's just like a clerical thing, Ted, you could just delete that right out of it today, because it says.
Yeah, and, and we agree, he can.
As far as, as far as I'm concerned, it's already gone.
But why not just, just say to the town, at the town meeting, this is gone, this is why it's not here anymore.
But it's clarification of why it's being done.
On earth.
To think that somebody, but they did were Polish.
Yeah, right, exactly. And I, I will count on Diane to pick up on it.
Oh, you know she will.
I count on her. I really do, I know she's sharp, she'll pick up on it. You're right, I mean, it would help if we had an explanation in advance that doesn't, that question doesn't, it'll be raised, but it'll be, you know, be less concerned about.
Okay, so.
So wait, I'm questioning that though, but I think strikeouts makes, that to me would be a little more fishy, like.
Yeah, right, yeah, it would look like you're deleting it.
Not have it there is, is better, because it should be.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah, and then you can have a note.
Yeah, you can put a note with it that says this is, that, for those of you that wanna know why it's missing? Refer back to 10-3-2 where we sunsetted this up and took it out.
10-3-2 would be the reason.
That's right, there'll be a note there that goes, this was taken out and sunsetted.
Well, 10-3 will be another, will, will do that. All, everybody will advance.
Yeah.
In the number six.
Okay, so, so other than.
Put it up front.
Other than up through that section that, where John started, was there anything prior to that in the shoreline zoning that anybody wants to look at?
There's really.
Okay, so proceeding forward, is there anything that you see in shoreline zoning?
Um, well, yeah, that on page, the 146.
Yeah.
Table we do a work.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So you want me to dress it up in a.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, if you see the table that's in the existing one.
Well, it's just the format of it.
So you would like it in the same kind of, you want me to number the table? Because we usually number all our tables.
Yeah.
You know, so number the tables.
And make it look like a nice table.
Make it look like a nice table.
Don't have this, uh, this, uh, formatting that, you know, goes around it.
If it looks like the previous page, it kind of.
Yes, it's a little bit of form.
Well, I, I have a few more questions.
That could use, that could use a table identification too.
Yeah. Yeah, on that same page, 146, is all the, what, looks like footnotes, 1 through 5? I'm not sure where, where.
Yeah, below the table.
Right below the table.
146 there?
Yeah, 146.
Yeah, those are all footnotes.
Okay, well then. Where are they referred, where are they coming from?
Let's take a look.
Yeah, because we try to eliminate the footnotes as much as possible.
I would agree, however, I think all these footnotes, if I'm not mistaken, this is gonna be, uh, section four, right? We gotta look at it in the, in the system.
I don't think they're footnotes, because if you read it, it says the following shall gu- shall govern and apply in this point system, and then it lists out those five points, so I don't think they're footnotes.
It's edited as, as five.
They are not footnotes.
Okay. So, um. All right, so numbers on that level of outlining, they have parentheses on both sides? Is that correct?
Yeah, no, that's gotta be fixed.
What's that? Because on other.
It looks like.
On, on previous, um, check of sections, we have just a number with a parentheses following, we don't have on.
Well, it, it, it looks here as if the text itself is wrapped around the, the, uh, the box.
Well, we have that, that, that's an issue too, but that's.
No, you're talking about the formatting of the references.
Formatting of the numbers isn't consistent with previous sections, it should just be one closed parentheses.
But we, we, we've already asked him to take care of all of that, this is just the stuff that we had from the prior point.
Yeah, one more thing on this page. Uh, the second to last paragraph, John was saying in these provisions. Is that just another paragraph?
Yep. Just needs to have indentations.
Just hanging out there. Okay, I wouldn't show. In the original text, it's just hanging out there, we have a lot of that in here, and that's the way the state writes their ordinance. And we copied this. Okay. You know, we, we did not write this. Okay, so, um, now, that doesn't mean that in a new format, you can't, I mean, if you wanna put a title on it, you can.
Well, we don't need to, really, it's just part of the previous. What's above it, it just continues.
Just make it consistent once again, all right, is what you're saying, the formatting, make it consistent.
Yeah, but I didn't know if it was a, it needed to be at like a, a number one or something.
If you would like, for clarification purposes, to do that, we can do that.
You want to what?
Well.
I think it might, it might be important to let people know, regardless of what else you have to say.
That's important, that's important. You are looking at 40% there, I mean, you're, you're saying, now we're standing all the other stuff above here, you know, no more than 40% of the total basal area, so four inches or more. Measure four and a half feet above the ground will remove, be removed in a 10-year period, that's, that's important.
So we, what we did, what we, what we did in other areas, we took that kind of note and brought it up to the front. I mean, you'd read through all of these provisions, trying to figure out what you can get, and then you get nailed, and then you get nailed at the end.
Yeah, bring it up by, and again, this is typical state structure.
Yeah, no.
That's what they love doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, blindside.
Right, but we could, we could bring it all the way up to what?
Oh, the street that's end?
Up to the, up to the top?
Well, this deals only with B. This deals with section B.
Oh, it only deals with.
It's dealing, it's, I believe it's dealing only, well?
Well, I don't know.
I don't know.
Because it says notwithstanding these provisions, and I'm assuming it refers to more than just B.
The, the whole section is clearing or removal of vegetation for act- action, activities other than timber harvesting, right?
Right.
I thought it was nine, uh, 915, 10-915.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think it's referring to.
It does. Because it, I'm looking at, I'm looking at both, I'm looking at the existing and the.
So that should be like the point D maybe?
No, I think it should be right there, uh, it should almost be point one, or, or in between point one and the title. Notwithstanding anything else that is in this section, you can't clear more than 40% in 10-year period.
It's all, and it's all under, did I give the title to that? So. Dude, these don't have titles, if you look at, if you look at your existing ordinance, which, which page?
61.
It, it comes under clearing.
Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting.
Right, but then it comes under sub-point two.
Yeah.
Which specifically has clearing limitations, and it's one of the clearing limitations. I still think that should be either a, probably a.
Let me make a recommendation, that should be number one, under, um, let's see, number nine, uh, 10.9.15, number one.
No.
No more than 40% of total volume trees, et cetera. Get rid of notwithstanding these provisions.
But it's, it's part of clearing limitations, because.
It's not a part of, it's a.
Section two.
Yeah, it's part of section two. Oh. You see that? Oh. Look, it's very clear, it, it's clear in the new one, in the old one, it's all over the place, I, you know, and I'm not even sure where it is. It's actually, it's actually under clearing limitation, and clearing limitations is our title, that's what we put in it. So I think, I think you're right, I think it needs to be.
Part of the opening paragraph or.
Or an A.
An A, yeah.
Just make it A. Notwithstanding all the provisions here, and, even though it's, you know.
Good reading.
Don't take forty, it's repeating something, it's repeated else, it's saying, this is supposed to be clearing only understory.
You could have a heading of, if it was A, of just total volume.
You know, actually, we could, because it's, we got maximum clearing size, well-distributed stand, removal of understory and ground cover, pruning, replanting. Maximum basal cut.
Here's, here's my thought on this, for whatever it's worth. I think it needs to stay right where it is, because if we move it, it changes the, the way the ordinance reads. If we move it to another spot, we're changing the ordinance. I think we need to leave it where it is. We can, we can change, no, we're not changing the ordinance, we're changing the format of the ordinance. We can move it to another spot when we go through and we make actual changes to the ordinance, but I think right now, this is where it is, and it should stay that way if we're simply dealing with a change in the format.
I think it's format change, that doesn't change the content.
Okay.
Doesn't change content, doesn't change it.
Still staying in there, that's why the content is still there.
It is staying in there, but is it on, does this cover the entire section of the ordinance, this, this entire ten nine fifteen? Or does it just cover section two?
That whole section, this whole section is, is dealing with people who are, were clearing vegetation in the shoreline zone for, for other reasons besides timber harvesting. That's usually, it's a kind of ridiculous one, 'cause it's usually, this is the one you deal with if you've got a lakefront house.
But I thought I just heard you say, I thought I just heard you say it applied to section two. This, this paragraph two, just above the table on page sixty-two.
No, no. No, the whole section, this whole section, this, this whole section fifteen goes on forever.
Fifteen does, but if you look at the original ordinance, it's the way it is.
Well, look, how we've gotten out.
We have a, we have a little table, it, it says number two, and you have the little table, I thought I heard you say that this section, notwithstanding, only related to number two.
Number two on the new one. Which is clearing limitations.
But I, that wasn't what I heard, what I heard was that it applied to the old ordinance, just to that, number two.
Alright, so you believe that it deals with number two, which is selecting.
No, that's, that's right. I, I'm going by what you said, and, and maybe I misunderstood what you were saying, it sounded as if you had said that that section applied only to number two. If it applies only to number two, we need to leave it, 'cause we don't wanna change the ordinance.
Right.
If it does not apply just to number two, but to the entire ordinance, then moving is not a problem.
Well, it does say notwithstanding these provisions, and, you know.
And, and it, when, when, notwithstanding these provisions means it's talking about the stuff directly above it.
Exactly, I, I go along with that.
Which is, which is section two.
Yep.
Which was selecting, selective cutting of trees within the buffers.
Right. And that, that's why I'm confused, I don't wanna change the ordinance. So it might be easier just to leave it this way.
Or, or propel it up underneath. It's well-distributed stand, but it's, clearing, it's under clearing limitations, if we really look at it. Because what we've got is. Sorry if I'm.
Alright, that's clear, that is part of clearing limitations, number two on the new one.
Because what it says. Number two on the new one, I put the title in there, and I should underline that, clearing limitations, 'cause it's not in the, the original. The original, the first one, it says, within the shoreline zone, the resource protection of Buddy Brimstone Pond, there shall be no cutting of vegetation with the strip of land extending seventy-five feet horizontal distance inland from the normal high water line, except to remove safety hazards. That's the no-cut zone. I, I made, labeled it as no-cut zone, so there'd be no clearing. The next one says, except in the areas designated in six-four G fifteen A, I'm looking at the, the old one.
Yep.
Any strip of land extending within a hundred feet horizontal distance inland from the normal high water line of Brimstone or of Kennebunk River, and a seventy-five foot horizontal distance from any other water by extreme tributary or upland area of wetland or upper strip of vegetation, there are preserved as following. Talks about maximum clearing size, the area that you need to clear, it probably should be area.
And I guess, the, the question that we need to ask is whether or not the notwithstanding these provisions applies to both one and two, or just to two?
You know what I think?
They are part of the two.
I think it's, this is right before three. So, if it doesn't apply to three, four, five, may not apply to one either, I think it's within two.
So, so do I, which is why I'm saying we don't move it, it has to stay within two.
Partly it's safe to leave it there.
And we can, we, if we wanna change it later, we can change it when we actually go through the entire ordinance and make whatever revisions we wanna make, but for now, for formatting purposes.
I agree with what Bob was saying, 'cause it's kind of, you get to everything, then you get.
It's a limit.
Well, I think we could make it A, I think we could, we could make it A under two.
Yeah, I, I don't think that changes anything, I just clarify.
Which basically says upfront, regardless of what it says below, you're not gonna clear more than forty percent here. So, let's start off with that, that, that's the boundary, that's the, that's the playing field we're working in, forty percent, you know? That's it, when you're doing, when you're considering all these other things.
And we've done that with a few other things, brought those important things that are overlooked to the front.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
'Cause that's, that's a classic sleeper at the end, and it says, oh, by the way, void where prohibited, it's prohibited here.
Yeah, and, you know, my point is that we just, we can't move it now. We, we definitely wanna change it at some point, it's just that right now, if we go to A, that's fine. Okay, we can't move it out of two, out of section two.
Well, I agree with it, yeah, relates to, to, I don't think we need to anyway.
Yeah. Oh, I think we might want to at some point, make it clear that, that forty percent clear cut might apply to the entire, the entire him, this timber harvesting area, and not just to section B.
Well, the irony is that in our own ordinance right now, you go over forty percent, you come to the planning board, no matter what, no matter where you are. When you come to the planning board, because remember, anything that's forty percent or under goes to the CEO, and anything forty percent and over goes to the, uh, goes to the planning board. That's why Cannon, that's why the Cannon's property, no Cannon's property, out of Curtis Rub, came to you guys.
But with, uh.
But they cleared sixty.
Yeah, but if it's. If it's a shoreline zone, they, they wouldn't come to us, 'cause they can't go more than forty, period.
That's right.
There's no.
No, they're coming to us.
That's part of what that is.
Yeah, that's part of what that is.
No more than forty, period.
Yeah, no more than forty. For all of the other areas, by our thing, they would, either the CEO or the board.
You know, it's interesting, the, moving the, the area they're referring to is within the RP's district, and we're not regulating it anyway. The state is. No, our new ordinance, the state's regulating it, we're not regulating it.
Okay.
But that's the state.
Well, what I'm saying is, Department of Forestry regulates it, because it's, this is the area that's within two hundred and fifty feet, the Kennebunk River.
Yeah, so these are the things that.
Yeah, we can't change it, no, I'm not gonna change it, it's good to.
So what are we gonna do with it?
Do make it A.
I, I don't know if that will work though, I need to throw this out, but.
Nobody stems less than two inches in diameter that can be removed, I know five saplings have been recruited.
Mr. Chair, um.
So if you don't have five trees, you gotta plant five trees in order to get rid of the little itty-bitty stuff?
You don't have to plant them, you just gotta approve them.
No, the show's the embarkation, right?
I wanna point something out about, uh, being in A, I don't know if it worked, as the previous sentence says, the following shall govern and apply to this point system. So, it's, um, is this part of the point system?
Where, where are we looking?
On page sixty-two.
You're in the wrong place.
Oh, I'm in the wrong section, okay, back to sixty-two.
We're in A, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but we're getting confused between the new and the old.
Okay, what he's referring to is the, the existing ordinance that is.
Right.
Oh, we don't, yeah, we don't, we don't need to.
I'm looking at the old as A.
Yeah.
We're talking here.
New. Okay, I feel better, 'cause I had no idea what you were.
Thanks, you're right.
Okay.
So you're good with it being A?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking at the old one, I gotta put that one.
Okay.
It's good to reference it, but you can see how confusing it is.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it may be old, but it's the ordinance as it is today. That's right, yeah, that's right. And what we're trying to do is make it more readable, more understandable, probably, that's what they need to be.
Okay.
And we can range around the, the, as long as it doesn't affect the, the outcome, we can arrange it around in a way that makes it more discernible than it currently is now, it's.
Is there anything else in ten nine fifteen?
Nothing jumped out at me.
What about the rest of it, the next page and a half?
Nope.
They're good. The font size is a little higher than.
So we're, we're all happy with, with ten and where we're at?
Yep.
In which case, you're all done?
Well.
Unless.
Until the next round.
Until the next round, but we don't have, we don't have eleven or twelve, unless the town planner has that right.
Did I not give you eleven?
I have eleven, yeah.
I have through ten, you have eleven in the old, in the new or the old?
The.
I don't have it in the new.
I don't have either.
I stopped at ten.
Are you kidding? I gave you the abridged version?
This one little page, one page.
One page, yeah. I'm sorry, guys.
Yeah. Alright.
It's not much, sure, I'll, I'll share this, there's not much there.
Yeah, okay.
But it's, it's not just the one page, is it?
Oh, I know.
No, it's.
Well, but.
Oh, okay.
Initially, it was.
No wonder, look, the.
You guys, but at least you got one page. Is the copy you're working, because believe it or not, I made all copies and I left them on the copy.
I have no idea.
We, uh, I do have things I wanna discuss of this.
Okay.
I know you want to all work.
Alright, can we take a break?
Absolutely, take five.
While you're doing that, I got your back.
Okay.
We'll take five, we're gonna make a, a copy of this. Because of a.
It's a blank sheet, is it, is it?
That's all I have, yeah.
Oh, I'm putting on time, I think you wanna make a copy of this.
I hope not. He'll be back if it was.
Did he get permission from the SAU to make copies?
Probably not.
RSU.
RSU, or whatever it is.
On the SAU?
Yes, RSU.
It's not an SAD anymore.
Oh, no.
I can't, I can't tell you what SAU stands for, 'cause I, we're on camera and I have to use a bad word to do it. Suffice it to say it's stupid something university. And the chairs make noise.
Yeah.
That's just not right, is it, Marty? Should bring your oil can with you, Noah. You can make money, bring the oil can, we'll charge the, Noah. Marty looked at it. So if we can get through, it, it, depending how well eleven looks like, maybe we can get through that, 'cause we only have eleven and twelve left. And we'll have the formatting done.
Yeah.
I think the, I, I only wanted to get to ten, that was it, because.
No, I, I think so, but we're still gonna have, we're gonna have to get eleven and twelve done in order to have, we, we don't wanna.
No, no, I thought it was, wanted to get it to ten to get it to the town meeting, that's what I'm saying.
When's the town meeting?
We're gonna call it, it's gonna be a special town meeting.
Oh, I thought that was, we're gonna wait.
No, way out here.
He was talking today, he's gonna call a special town meeting.
Hey, that's, he was talking to you, but when it beforehand, we had a deadline to turn out to get this done.
Yep.
That's why.
Right.
Well, we can, we can find out when he comes in, and get clarification.
Well, we got done with what we, what our deadline said, we, we needed to get that.
That's why we're.
So, question for you.
Answer.
Town meeting.
Yes, sir.
We having a special town meeting for this, or are we waiting until June?
No, I'm gonna do this.
We're doing a special, okay.
Let's get it out of the way, so it has nothing to do with June.
Do we wanna have eleven and twelve finished for that special town meeting?
Yeah, we need to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
So we'll have to do it in January.
What about fire? Have, have you been making upgrades to the, um, the previous sections?
The ones that you, that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I hope to listen, second pair will help too, 'cause I don't seem to get enough time to.
Yeah. Check one of them.
Fire. About fire, what?
Whatever they've done, Charlie, what about fire?
Fire, we can't do fire in this section, we're gonna do fire in the next, next round.
Right, this is just a format.
But it's reserved, but it's not in there, remember, fire was reserved in the standard, this, what, uh, seven, section seven, all the standard uses. Not section seven, when was it, section five?
Five.
Yeah, five, it was in section five, where all of the, the standard performance standards, it was a section reserved for fire protection. So, where do you apply? Right, 'cause we, this, remember, we're not adding anything new to this rewrite.
This is, this is the old regulation in a new format, it's not new changes.
No new regulations.
Once we get the format changed, then we can present each new section when we get there.
Right.
Then we're gonna have a leg in the sand on fire.
We will when we get to the, to, to writing it for the new ordinance.
Public safety is still your like.
Yep.
Public safety is still your like, it's still your interpretation of, 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 of health, safety and welfare.
Okay.
Okay? What the fire does is, is makes specifications that, that back up whatever you wanna do. So, if somebody wants to challenge you, the, you know, the, the problem is, if you, if you don't have certain specifications of what you wanna do, let's say, we don't have anything on fire, but you say, well, you're required to protect health, safety and welfare, and fire's one of those. We want you to put in a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water. Uh, without an ordinance on that, they may seem arbitrary and capricious, unless you've got some very good data backing up the need for that. And that's why we have these sections that have specifications in them, so we don't get challenged in court on them. And also, it's fair to the applicant to know what they, what they're facing. Um, but that doesn't preclude you, you're not requ, you're not limited not to consider life, safety and, and welfare.
You have to.
You have to.
But, but question is, in the past, okay, past, 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 or wherever else, huh, where did it come about? Okay, you have to be within a thousand feet, let's say like on Route one.
Those in subdivision. It's in subdivision ordinance, that's where a thousand feet is, it's not in the ordinance, not in the zoning ordinance, not that I can.
But it was, it was applied to Route one, HC one, that's where I'm coming at.
I have not found it, Marty.
I think that's, that's an example where I think if there wasn't anything written, we, we decided that that's what it, that makes it safe, that makes it safer.
No, 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 Tom, what I'm coming at is, when I was going, and I'm not trying to be a pain in the ass.
Yeah.
Okay, when I was coming to turn around and put the new garage in, okay, one of the first things that was said, you had to make sure that you were within a thousand feet, okay, and that has stuck with me, luckily I watched, okay, but I'm just saying this.
Yeah.
And I can tell you where it came from, Marty. It, it's not in the ordinance, it didn't come from anything other than the fact that that's the, the hose length on the trucks to connect to a hydrant. You gotta be, you gotta be within a thousand feet of a hydrant, or you can't connect a truck to it.
In that region.
And, and that's, and that, that's where it came from, that's, that's why that decision was made.
And that's where the spacing reform, see, the town took action along Route one. Maybe, which, because of your questions, we found out that there's actually connectors every thousand feet, this board didn't know that until you, so now, we can say, there are connectors, and you'll connect to the nearest one. You know?
Talking like I said.
Within that.
But in the past, okay, along the way, and I'm saying, I'm not trying to get totally off the line here, but I mean, the fact, past is, Like when we're down at Southern Main Marine, okay, he's more than a thousand feet.
Yep.
Okay. He's been required to.
He should, he should have been required to.
But that's the same spot, also at the same time, okay, where Kohl's by hydrant would be.
Yep.
Which required.
Which was required and never.
No, it was not required, he put it, he was doing it manually, it wasn't required by Cole, he went to do it manually on his own.
In the town, yeah, yeah, so.
Sounds like they didn't want to pay for it, basically, so what happened?
Boy, if something ever burnt down with the town.
Could, could we get back on topic some?
Yeah.
So, look, looking at the list of, of standards for specific conditional uses, these are all the ones that we currently specify, Will?
I haven't done the list.
So you've got a bunch of.
And I want to go over a few things here, what this is, is this is, I've gone through all of the conditional uses, I think I got them all, that we have cited in all of our new sections. So it's not included any conditional uses, we might come up in the residential district when we do that, but for the moment, these are what we've got. That we need to make decisions on what we're going to be doing, um, whether we're gonna have standards or not. Um, this is why the various conditional uses that are not already in the ordinance, that we have cited in the new five business districts. Excuse me, mixed use districts. And you can see that we have some of them in, in some districts that have a lot of these things in them. Some have only one. We have two that don't have any listings. And strangely enough, they might be for, for a specific purpose, especially if we have omitted uses.
Medical marijuana, I thought we had that.
No, we took it out.
No, we had to.
Take a look at your ordinance, we took it out at one point. I think we had it originally in the T C district.
The what?
The T C district.
No, we turned out, had it, we had it, because it was a permitted use already, turn it on.
No, it's not permitted use. It's, it's.
It was considered. We had, we had, um, somebody who was raising it already.
It was considered to be an agricultural use, right?
But that, we, we defined it and we passed it as, as, as something that's not agricultural. But we never.
No, I was just saying, when they were doing that.
Oh, when they were doing that, they came in under agriculture, right, but they're gone, in fact, all of our medical marijuana facilities are gone, and all of them, gone. All the ones that are permitted.
The legal ones.
The legal ones, the legal permitted ones are gone.
Some of the illegal ones are gone too.
I, I thought the, that it was permitted in the V I though. But regardless, okay, so we have these, these couple.
Take a look at your ordinance, guys, maybe I missed it, but I don't think so.
But I don't think this is anything we need to deal with right now.
What was your question in terms of the, the rewrite that we're considering now?
My concern is reserving numbers for it in the formatting. And you'll see, I think, except for two in there, three, there's three in there, uh, I have included all of them in the, in the rewrite. And when, and when I say I've included them all, I've reserved spaces for them. And that's, that's the, the list of con, the, the list with the numbers is what would be in the con, the table of contents. And I would format our, uh, section eleven six, which is all the specifics, I would format, format that, um, based on that list. And any additions or, or, or exclusions that you want to make. Before I started renumbering them all, you know, I want to make sure that I've got the, the right number of reserved spaces. Remember, I'm not putting those in, because we haven't written those sections yet, what I'm putting in is the reserved section in the nine, in eleven six section. So we don't have to renumber the whole thing on a later day.
Okay, so the only ones.
Do them alphabetically, you know?
The only ones that you don't have on this.
Adult business and marijuana.
And, and nursing home.
Well, there's adult business is the second one down, eleven point six.
Yeah, I'd put it in, I want to know if I should.
Uh.
Because we, we would have to write standards for it.
American marijuana, if I recall correctly, it was allowed, but except for in the townhouse corner, where we said it wouldn't be allowed. That's where I remember it was said, no, we wouldn't have it there.
I, well, I, I remember being in favor of having it.
Yeah, but.
And then I kind of yielded, I thought that I kind of got out, but it was, I don't know if it took a vote or anything, but I think, I don't know if we really, there were some questions from.
Townhouse corner, because it was said, no, it wouldn't be there, but it was, it was allowed otherwise.
But that's, it's not really what we're discussing right now, though.
Well, now, now it's just a question of whether or not we want him to reserve numbers for it going forward.
That's right.
Because it said, no district, we said it was allowed, except for.
Well, but that doesn't even matter now, whether, if it isn't in our current ordinance, then it isn't.
But just, just bringing up an issue, it'd be nice if we could fit it in alphabetically now, but the point would be other things. Rather than have numbers, can we do like the definitions where it's just alphabetical order? Or do we have to have?
Alphabet number, it's, it's an ordinance.
You're gonna refer to sections.
Yeah.
It's an ordinance section. But my, my suggestion, though, would be not to put in reserve and then adult business and age restricted.
Oh, I'm not gonna do that when I.
Just put in reserved.
This is for us to know what we're putting in there.
Yeah.
Well. Why?
Okay, if it's just for us, then.
Or, or else we can, we can put it in there.
Why not put it in there, and then you know that you got to work on it, every time you're looking at the regulations, you got to get to this stuff and do it.
Because, because we don't want it to be in the ordinance and have nothing in there.
But the.
Because we have it in the ordinance right now.
It's already in the ordinance.
Performance standards, these are things we already have in the ordinance, that we don't have performance standards.
Performance standards for, any question on any of it, but it's so hard to read this way. If you moved like the name, adult business out, left the end parentheses and then put reserved.
But my, my suggestion is, we don't even say adult business, we just put reserved as a tag. So we could plug in anything, it probably will be adult business when we get there, but maybe not, and just leave reserved spaces.
So I, I.
Just to keep your numbering system consistent.
I'm, I'm looking at it, going, why don't we just take all of the, the things that we do have the standards for? And list them, and then everything else that's reserved can be listed down below.
Because then I gotta renumber it when we go back and, and do it.
Right.
So I have to reformat the entire section again, I want to reformat those terms.
I don't understand why you would have to reformat.
If you have a thing down here.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying that we do it alphabetically, I'm simply saying, right now, this is eleven point six point one through eleven point six point thirty-nine, and we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. We've got fourteen things, why not just have eleven point six point one through eleven point six point twenty-five, and then down below that, we can just add in all the reserves. That's all I'm saying.
But then you lose the alphabet.
And then we're out of formatting, because our formatting is.
When there's a change down here, you got to change all of the numbers up here to reserve it, for every time you change it.
We're going to end, at some point, we're going to end up adding in a new conditional use, are we gonna change the numbers and reformat the whole thing all over again?
Yeah, yeah, so it's in sequence.
It's in sequence, if you want to make it. If you want to make it user friendly, I mean, the, one of the, one of the hardest things, if you look at our current one, and, and you're looking for something, let's say, I'm looking to put in. An agricultural demonstration project. You, that's not, you look through the As in that, and it's not there. It isn't until you weigh down, people have, if they're looking for a specific use, they have a tendency of ending when that letter ends.
Indexing.
Then I, no, I would say, instead of, instead of having it three digits, have it four or five, so that you can add in, you could have eleven point six point one point one, to fit something in between accessories and adult businesses.
What's wrong with reserving a section?
Then you get.
Huh? What's wrong with reserving a section?
Nothing, there's nothing wrong with it.
Well, we know that these ones should be reserved.
These are things we need to.
And I'm just thinking that we, we should have a, a larger numbering sequence, because we're going to, at some point, somebody's gonna come in between adult business and age restricted. And we have to reformat all the numbers all over again.
We want to jump off that bridge when we get.
Skip there, yeah.
Do deal with that later.
I, I have a question about adult business.
Yeah.
It, it's not conditional in any, any district.
Yeah.
Imagine that, so why would we have to have it?
Because we have it to find.
Well, we pull it out of the definition, if it's not.
Because you probably want to have it defined. Now, why don't we have it defined?
Fine, but that, that doesn't make it conditional.
Doesn't make it anything, it's just a definition.
What, what you're referring to now is changing the ordinance, and we're not changing the ordinance after changing.
We're not changing the ordinance.
I'm not, I'm not, what am I not saying here? We have a definition for adult business.
We can't take it out, it's part of the ordinance.
I agree, but that doesn't mean that it's allowed anywhere, just because of the definition. If it doesn't have a definition, it's not allowed. Here's, 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 here's how this works. With omitted uses in the situation, we identify it as a use. It's identified as a use, okay? But it's not permitted in any district, by omitted uses, therefore, it's not allowed in the town.
That, that.
That what?
That kind of.
It's a loophole. It's a loophole that says that you can't have adult.
No, but it's not, it's not a loophole, because someone could say, well, that's not an adult business that I want to put there, it's, it's what, a massage parlor.
Right.
Okay, then we can say, well, we have a definition, and this is what we mean by adult business, and it's not permitted.
So if it's in the omitted use list, it'll never be a conditional use.
Right.
This is.
So why do we have a list?
Because you have to be able to identify it when it shows up.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, Tom.
Nuclear power plants aren't allowed, we don't have to give conditional reasons why, why, in case someone applies, it, it is not allowed, it's omitted, it's not allowed.
Well, and this is, this, and, and I understand what you're saying, and this is an issue that we still have, have, have to discuss. Because, I mean, you know, the issue is, if we're going to identify it, and if we're not gonna allow it, that's, be right, we don't have to have a conditional use for it. But if we are going to create a situation where it can go somewhere, we have to have a conditional use for it. And usually, that's done by distance, from the school, from the church, and so forth.
Two thousand, three, four, church, two thousand, fifteen.
Usually, it puts it in a, in a very small location.
I think as far as the legality in the there, then, then it becomes a challenge where, I mean, I have no, no problem with adult business, but if we gave conditional reasons why, then. People might think, if I meet those conditions, then I can be in town someplace, or it seems like it's.
No, we're, but we're simply saying, this is the definition of an adult business.
Yeah.
It sells kinky sex toys, it sells whatever it is that it sells. That's how we have defined adult businesses, we don't have a conditional use for it, we don't have anything for it, because it's not allowed. We have said, if your business is doing A, B, C, then it's not allowed.
So then I agree with Tom a hundred percent, it's, it needs to be under conditional use.
And I agree with that.
It can be in the definition.
But the, the question becomes, do we want to allow those kinds of businesses, and if we do, then we have to put them in a conditional.
Deal with that when we, when we.
From that, but it already in town.
We're talking about two different things, I think.
Well.
We're talking about whether or not it should be permitted, and we're talking about whether or not we should reserve a slot, right?
And that's the discussion, do we want to reserve a slot?
Yep.
And since we're talking about label the slots as reserved specifically for this.
No, we can put it in there.
We can if we want to, if we get to that point, cool down.
But we already have it in town.
Just leave a reserved space.
Doesn't matter.
It just wouldn't say reserve adult business, it would just say reserve. At some point in the future, we could drop it in there.
Yeah.
We already have it in town.
Yeah, so what?
So I mean, then you're trying to say that you can't have it in town.
That's not what we're talking about, Marty.
That's why I tried to ask.
But is it in town as a permitted use?
No, it's retail.
Yeah.
That particular one is.
It's retail.
Yeah, so.
Why they came up with the definition of adult business?
That's right, because we didn't have one prior to that.
I, I don't see adult business in the definitions.
Yeah, it is.
Is it on your list?
It should be.
It is not in our definitions.
Wow. I don't ever remember seeing the definition of adult.
I don't remember working on it.
We know when we see it, though.
What have you been hanging out with the Supremes?
Well, here's the kicker, it's permitted use in the V I district.
Even though we don't have a definition.
I guess that's something we're gonna have to fix up.
We're gonna have to fix that.
Okay, but let's get back.
So get rid of adult business.
But in, in terms of, not, not, not even so much get rid, but I, I agree with John, in terms of.
All or be just book reserves.
Just put reserve, no description beside it.
And I would also add some extras, I, I don't.
Absolutely, yeah.
What evidence do you miss?
No, 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 just the more reserved spaces.
More reserved numbers.
The slots where there are likely to be additions.
That's why we're having this discussion, what other additions do you think we're gonna look at?
So far.
Don't know, I, I just, I, I tend to agree with John, I don't know what they're going to be, but for example, if we had something, uh, between drive-through, uh, correctional pre-release and drive-through. Somebody's bound to come along with, with something that starts with a D A or a D E, so you just put a reserved thing in there, just, and if I understand John correctly, that's what he's saying.
Just, yeah.
Just we've got some blank spaces for reserve.
And just, just so you know, this is an example, the correct, correctional pre-release facility is very well defined, and is not permitted anywhere in town. Currently, in the current ordinance, and has been even in the ordinances back, all the way back to two thousand and seven.
But, so we don't need standards for them?
Yeah, if, if they're.
Not allowed.
A lot of. Well, now you're totally confusing me.
Maybe we should go through and scratch some out here. No, we can't change anything, this.
This is, this is in the ordinance.
This is in the ordinance, this has been in the ordinance.
But when we go through to correct the ordinance and change it, then we could take it out, because it's not allowed, so we could take it off the conditional use, but right now, it's unconditional use. Done alive.
Correctual pre-release is a conditional use?
In the, no, it's not allowed, but in the ordinance, under the conditional uses, it's there, it's just not allowed.
One of the many things we have to.
Yeah, it's one of the.
So we'll have.
I don't know, that's what he's got to say.
Where is it in the current ordinance?
Well, it's, it's defined, it's, uh, you'll find it, uh, in the current ordinance. It is, uh, section eight eleven, page one thirteen.
That will open up another reserved slot.
Well, it's already in there.
Right.
What's already a.
We even have the standards for it, but it's not allowed.
My suggestion would be.
If you look through the table.
But. Since, since we already approved that it's not allowed, the town voted to not allow it anywhere.
Mm-hmm.
Shouldn't that just be pulled right out of there, clinically?
Not right now.
Can't do it.
Can't do it now, because we're not changing the ordinance. This is one of those things that when we get there, we can pull it up, but we can't do it right now.
One of the reasons, let me explain why these things are set up in this way, why, why adult business is often set that way up, and pre, uh, especially pre, um, pre-release facilities are set up that way. Uh, because they're often mandated, like the state mandates that they, that you can, they can put a pre, uh, a pre-release facility in your, in your, uh, in your town. They did the same thing with adult, uh, daycare, they had adult daycare, uh, halfway houses. We cannot regulate halfway houses, because so many towns did, it would be for kids who are, are coming out of reform school, or, or, uh, adults, uh, were developmentally challenged, they would have group homes.
Yeah, we have some.
Yeah, we have some, and, and, but there was, there was a long period of time which towns would prohibit them. Whereas the state finally came in and said, no, you can't do that. Um, the state did that with pre, uh, pre-release facilities too, because they were, this is when they were going through, getting rid of A and Y, all the rest of that. So they mandated that towns, um, should, uh, cannot prohibit it, well, somehow we did. We put it in the ordinance to be in compliance with state statutes, but it didn't mean that we let it go anywhere. And that's exactly what's happened here, we still have it in the ordinance, um, as a protection. And obviously, towns do the same thing with adult business, where they don't want it, but because some, there's been some cases about First, uh, First Amendment, they allow it to be in a specific location, or one little location. Has to be two thousand feet away from the school, two thousand feet away from church, two thousand feet away from a public facility, or recreational facility, and so forth, if you start drawing the arcs, it's in like one little place over there, and you know, swamps.
Right, and they won't let you properly.
Things like that, that's it. So we can, we can, we can zone John's land for that.
He's gone, right.
Perfect, yeah.
He's gonna ride his way back there, I hope we can tell him.
Exactly. You're gonna call the Johnsons.
My name is Phoebus.
Okay.
So, all, all we're looking at is just the list, and then later on, we'll.
Later on, and, and the question is, do, you know, there's certain things, you know, certain things that we, uh, you know, the question is, do we need standards for? I mean, like nursing home, I was gonna combine nursing home and, uh, here.
The question, so it doesn't look like we have some ulterior motive, is to put in, except where we already have like three or two in a row, other than those, put in every other one as a reserved one, so there's an extra slot every place.
Okay, we're gonna be up in like the forties or fifties.
Yeah, so what?
So, just, just out of curiosity.
Or every third one, most of the, at least every third, third?
Well, but the idea is to maintain alphabetical order as long as possible.
It's really just a crap shop, which one's gonna be next.
Right, it is.
Yeah, so.
Well, we could leave every goal, every item.
But if you do every other one.
Yeah.
Yeah, every other one, even if you get a lot of water, you have to do some reformatting, but you wouldn't have to reformat the whole list, just until you get to an open reserved slot.
Yeah, no matter what, there's gonna be issues down, just because we don't.
Well, yeah, but what's, what's the problem in having a lot of reserved slots? It's looking, it's forward looking to me, it's, you know, getting into inevitable changes.
Actually, we put one between every single one?[1760.81]
Actually, we put one between every single one?
That's what I was suggesting, except where you know there're gonna be more, like two and three.
Then we'll put.
So we're gonna.
With energy, it will be eleven, six, eight.
Yeah. But, yeah, and then when you have reformatting, you don't have to reformat the entire list, you just reformat a section of the list.
So we're planning on a lot more regulations?
Lot more definitions.
Okay.
No. We're not somewhere. Well, you get, well, one example, you get camp runs and camping areas, there's no definition of a campground.
There was a personal camp site.
Right.
A definition of campground.
I'm sorry, you're, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
I just.
Don't terrify me like that.
Yeah, I just missed it. But it doesn't say anything about an RV park.
No, it doesn't. See, this is one of the problems, it's an old definition.
What are your question about that is, because when season cottages, okay, first started, it was gonna be a campground with RVs. And how was that gonna be allowed if we didn't have a permitted use of allowing it to be there? We had to have something somewhere.
We do know.
Okay.
Know.
So let's just go back to this issue, so that we can get this formatted, taken care of.
Right.
And go home.
Right.
Do whatever you want.
I think, you know, I'm fine with just take the names off it, we've got reserves scattered around in here. I think, at some point in time, and you guys are right, at some point in time, we're gonna have to add more stuff in. And the ordinance will have to get reformatted. Let's worry about it then.
Yeah, worry about that later.
Right now, I mean, we've got a bunch of empty spaces that we're gonna be able to fill in, or not. We'll just leave them there, if we don't have anything that fits, we'll read down through and you'll see, "Reserve." Pet daycare facility, and the next one will say, "Reserve." Okay. And somebody will say, "Why?" It's because for something that starts with PE, and they needed a place to put it.
Well, that would be the same logic as putting in, you know, a reserve every other day.
Right, it would.
So if we go to every other one, though, rather than have it all listed with taking up space, can we just have.
Change the numbers.
Even numbers, or any odd numbers listed, and then like space in between? Or we'll just have listed one, and then four, five, seven?
Takes an extra page, Tom, big deal.
No.
We've already got too many pages.
I thought it was only ten.
Including the table of contents.
John was adding it down to three pages.
And one of those was the cover page.
Yeah, well, you know, but you guys wanna go down this road, so we gotta do it right, and we do it.
We'll do it down this road.
The whole board.
No.
Except me and Marty.
Well, is there anything you don't wanna write a conditional use standard for?
Well, if we have.
Do you want me to go on a tirade about the rule of law?
If they're listed as conditional uses, we need conditional use standards.
It doesn't matter, because nobody has to obey them anyway, so.
Are you referencing last night by any chance?
Uh huh.
What happened in Congress today?
Which one? The whole shooting.
What happened in Congress, huh?
It wasn't pretty.
It was ugly.
I haven't had the privilege to watch TV today.
I didn't watch it.
I didn't hear, listen to it.
Not all of it was ugly, they fixed some of the tax law for two years instead of one year at a clip.
Yeah, but there's more to come, though.
Well, yeah, I know they were.
Hold your breath.
For that, I don't. Guys, what do you wanna do with standards for specific conditional uses?
Just put reserved.
Just put reserved in?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got enough there now.
Just put reserved in, and we'll move it forward from there.
All right, and then what I'll do is, I will, based on this, I will plug in the things that we've got into here and get it ready for the next meeting.
Okay.
We can do that. This'll be easy, because actually our performance standards aren't as complex as those in the state stuff.
And what do we have in twelve, we just have those?
The site plan in twelve.
All we have is purpose, applicability, classification, and review authority? As if that's not enough?
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, no, this is just one page on the table of contents.
Okay.
Then we go into administration, zoning board of appeals, administration, and then the big question is descriptions.
Oh, zoning board of appeals is under our ordinance? I wanna change a few things there.
What are the appeals, it's section ten of the current.
Really?
It is, it's, where are you gonna find it, it's not gonna force it.
No, I mean, one of the standards really should be, you know, the way they make their decisions, one of the standards should be that there are no viable alternatives.
That is the condition.
It sure wasn't last night. No, it was economic, it wasn't that they weren't any alternatives.
No, the alternative.
Because in fact, the attorney even said, "Well, we could do it this way," remember, you're talking about that strip at the bottom.
Yeah.
"We could do it this way," but that's just too much trouble.
I know. But that's not what the ordinance is for, the ordinance says that there is no other viable alternative.
What it says is, you cannot, what it says, is you cannot realize a reasonable return for the land.
Yeah, well, that's different.
That's what it says. But the definition of reasonable return, I think I probably told you guys this story before, but, you know, I'll say it again since you brought it up. In Falmouth, I represented a client, they had a piece of land that had been cut in half by the railroad when it went through, and then they changed the zoning ordinance, and he could not get a building with them because of the way the railroad went through. And he just couldn't, it was a long piece of land, it'd been created by the railroad, and not by him. He could not get a building permit because he couldn't get a front yard variance, that's what he needed. And he tried, numerous times, someone went through ZDA. And, you know, the argument that I had made was, it's a railroad, it wasn't created by the client, there was no other, there was no reasonable return. There was no way he could let anything on that land in order to get a reasonable return. And a reasonable return is not scenic, you know, it was in a haze field, it was basically open ground. And they said it could be hay, and I brought in an expert, an expert, he was a farmer, hay. He said, "Basically, I can't turn my units," because it came to a point, he says, "I cannot reasonably return this," and they said, "You can use a cutter bar and get hay that way, and that's a reasonable return." And they denied it.
Using that as an illustration for last night, then the zoning board of appeals failed to do its job. They failed miserably, and.
Or I'm kidding.
That's right, they failed, I'm thinking of submitting whatever.
Because, well, I can think of two reasons that they failed miserably. First off, there were alternatives to what could be done, and secondly.
At least three.
The concept of a reasonable, of a reasonable return for governmental entity is facetious at best. There is no such thing as a reasonable return for governmental entities.
And it doesn't have to remain.
Yeah, it's not the entity, see, that's where I also objected, it's not the entity, it's the land.
Right.
It's not supposed to be a respecter of persons, it's the land.
And the land, can the land achieve a reasonable return? Well, we need a new town hall.
Yeah.
We need elderly housing.
But it doesn't even.
There's a number of different reuse options that you could do.
It doesn't have to be municipal.
Doesn't have to be, no, and they were saying there is no other economic use, well, there's residential.
Sure. Well, I rest my case in terms of.
But, you know, they, I don't think that was, they were looking at other issues that were involved in this.
Yeah, they failed their job.
They were looking at the public, you know, the public benefit.
But that's not a reason to grant a variance, the reason has to be that there's no other way to do it. It should be very hard to get.
Well, the one point, the one point that I'd like to make, that I think is wrong with the system, is that this board, I'm gonna identify the problem, because guess what? We understand the ordinance and how it's applied, and what sections relate to other sections. I think in any case, an applicant should first come to the board for what the board feels are reasonable ways to resolve issues. And two, the ZDA should have gotten input from the town planner, the co-enforcement, all the other.
We were not asked.
Huh?
We have been excluded from the whole process.
Yeah.
I'm not blaming her.
I don't blame you.
I don't blame anybody, I'm just saying, that ought to be, those ought to be the benchmark, I mean, that's what we deal with all of the time, and we work trying to help applicants navigate through this and be conforming, that's what we do. If it's possible.
Because it was the town that get their way?
Yeah.
I mean, it was Joe.
For the town better good, it's a good thing.
Well, we gotta move on, let's.
Yeah, we shouldn't move on.
But is there any reason to submit a, what do they do at the Supreme, they're all about a dissenting opinion or something like that, does that do anything?
You could put in a dissenting opinion and submit it to the ZDA for their consideration, and they're giving their findings of fact at the next meeting, just like the boys did.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean they're gonna take it into consideration.
But it has really.
But it is in the record.
But there's no legal standing or anything, other than just a record, right?
Well, they can challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A decision, right, don't they have thirty days, huh?
Forty five.
Forty five days.
This is a variance, not an appeal, not an administrative appeal. And remember, the variance was for, the variance was just for the coverage. It's all this for? The variance came from the ZDA. It was for increasing the lot coverage to forty percent.
And having access, having technical access to the road, the frontage?
They don't have that, they have no authority to do that.
But that's why they put in that fake room.
They were showing the road as being, as showing they were in compliance with the ordinance. That this was the solution to deal with the back lot issue, the estate lot approach. And what they were asking the ZDA, it had nothing to do with that, that was a presentation they made. But what they gave a variance for was for the lot coverage. Because, you know, quite frankly, there is no variance, they have no authority to grant any variance for the alternative way of getting out of there, that's not. They only can give a variance to a dimensional standard.
So we still have to rule on that, whether that's acceptable frontage?
If you choose to.
Let's just get back to this, and.
Yes.
We end this meeting, and then we can do whatever we want, but let's.
Like go home.
Go home, go home. So let's just look at this and go, okay, any ideas to, to then, I don't wanna.
I'll work on it Christmas Eve.
Yeah, no, please don't, not Christmas Eve.
I.
Christmas Day, okay.
Yeah, Christmas Day is okay. Christmas Eve, you gotta make the cookies and put it out for sanity clause.
I would have a request, I have about three different kinds of copies now, and different dates, and different writing.
Unified copies.
So that we all can start back with, at that same page as possible, once all of the formatting is done and you've got it in, that everybody starts new with, no one to compare that to the.
No.
Right, because that, I mean, I know it's a little extra work, but if you get that secondary.
I have to do it over here.
So, yeah, I know, but there's a lot of copying, a lot of.
Oh, wow.
It's not the copy, it's just the time it takes to just do the formatting.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Keep it.
It's extremely.
And you're gonna be available in Florida for review and editing?
Yeah, we're gonna send it to me.
I.
Well, if you give me your email, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, you're gonna send stuff up.
Yeah. Well, you're not changing your email, are you?
No.
Which one is your email?
Robert.
Robert.
Rocketmail.com.
So the other one is void.
I don't know.
The Yahoo one.
Never had a Yahoo one.
Send it out to Robert.
Yeah, it's on my list.
I don't know who he is. I've got two on my list, too.
I don't know who that other guy is.
He's getting a lot of stuff.
Where's this Arundel?
Yeah, he's wondering that because he lives in Australia.
I went, Rocketmail is actually Yahoo. Why they gave me Rocketmail, I don't know. I went on Yahoo and asked for it. That's right. Came back, Robert, what the hell is that, okay.
Well, that's probably like.
But now I got a type outlet, you know?
That's like Roadrunner, or RR, or Maine Dodge, or whatever.
They should have agreed it.
RR.com.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, how about town planner at ArundelMaine.org?
Oh, boy.
Boy. Yeah. Go in and get a home loan, I think, something like BC.
BC one.
Okay, was there something that you said you wanted to cover?
Whatever number.
I'm sorry, the ordinance.
I don't have it.
So when is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is on the fourteenth of January, it's a regularly scheduled meeting.
That's not the ordinance stuff, right?
Well, then, the meeting after, that's the twenty eighth.
Which I'd be missing the two.
Twenty eighth, or are we doing it weekly at that point?
We're not gonna do weekly, we're gonna have to get it done. If, that may mean that we have to restrict it out, I don't know how much time it will take us to go through eleven and twelve.
That's what I'm saying, if we're gonna cause a special meeting.
Well, we may have to look at it and say, you don't want the twenty eighth, all we're gonna do is the ordinance. But last year, doing that every week, yeah, that wasn't.
That wasn't.
That was not productive. And I'd rather say, we're going to have a meeting and do the ordinance, and just have the regular meeting and do the ordinance, as opposed to having special meetings.
It's fine with me, but we also don't like to keep applicants waiting.
Yeah.
We have, we still have a lot of applicants, we still have six items on the agenda we won't cover.
So we might have to consider it, but anyway.
It's up to you, gentlemen, if you want, if you wanna have a special meeting, we can have a special meeting on the twenty first to cover the ordinance.
When are you planning for the special town meetings, do you have a date in mind? When we get this done, and when I am able to do all the stuff on it. Plus, on top of that, we still have to tackle the residential districts.
No, we don't. That was it, that was the residential wasn't included in this.
No.
So don't say we have to do it, we wanna get this formatted first, so let's just get it formatted first, so the residential will follow in afterwards, because there'll be formatting.
One at a time.
It'll be easier and less stressful.
As long as it works, you know, as far as administering the ordinance.
Well, is there any reason why you want?
You must present the ordinance in a new format, you need the residential portion of the ordinance to be in the format.
Well, it's already in, the current residential's already in, we already went over that, remember? That's section six of the ordinance.
Is there any reason why this can't be presented at the June town meeting?
No, but. So I have done, we had, the reason I bring this up, there was changes made to the comp plan last year, last June, to the residential districts, and basically, the comp plan committee has some changes they wanna see made to the residential districts. And they're kicking it over to the planning board to start bringing it in.
And when we get to it, we will get to it. Sorry to disappoint the comp plan. I think the very first thing we have to do is this formatting, but go to town meeting, and then if we have a special town meeting to get it done, I think that's great, because then we've got that done, it's going to be much harder to give a new format and changes to the ordinance itself at the same meeting.
We can't, it's death, I would say that would be just insane.
I agree, I don't think that would work well, so if we can get the formatting done, let's do a special town meeting, get it accomplished, and then we can work on making the changes, and we can, we might be able to have something for June, we may not. But let's get the formatting done and out of the way, so we can start working on other stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's good. I'd rather, you have one target, multiples.
We're pretty close to getting it done, a couple more meetings.
Yeah, I mean, well.
We're working on it.
Everybody wants to.
Couple more years.
Well, there's something like that substantive in it, it's actually more of me, how many away, finding the time, how many away, and making the changes you guys do. You guys have given me the direction, and I've gotta implement it now. We have some, a few more changes, I will get you, for the next meeting, what I will do is, I won't have everything done if I print it off for you, but I can print off a brand-new, let's say, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. I will make those changes and print that off.
Yeah, and if we work on.
Then come back and give you, you know, one, two, ten. Changed format as you requested, the format you requested.
Yeah, once it's done.
Okay. You know, for the next, I don't want us to hold up. Well, I just don't wanna hold up anything, waiting for me to slug through all the format. I'd rather, you know, let's get it done from your standpoint, and then the onus is on me to do all the secretaries.
And that does become a question, do you guys wanna meet more than twice a month?
We don't want to.
And I don't want to.
If we have to, but we can make that decision on the fourteenth, let's wait. If we have to, but we can make that decision on the fourteenth, wait, let's wait.
Will we have, if we decide on the fourteenth, will we, will we have enough time to post it to, to meet on the twenty first?
You know, we need three days.
We need three days, okay, so we can decide on the fourteenth.
Right.
As, as how that works.
See what's on, coming up in the.
Depending on snow starts.
Yeah, I heard, I heard on the news tonight, we're not having snow this year.
Okay, this year, maybe.
That's right, this year, no. Next year's another snow. Uh, but, okay, so we're, we're all agreed, we'll meet on the fourteenth, we've got a bunch of stuff on, on the agenda for the fourteenth.
Oh, there is on the agenda.
And I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, I don't remember, but I, I, I told Tab.
We got a server problem.
Hang on, just for a sec. I told, I told Tab that anything that comes in after the thirty first is not showing up on the agenda. It's a four, it's a fourteen day notice, if they wanna get on the agenda, give him the paperwork in time to meet that fourteen day requirement. If it comes in on the, on the second of January, it's too bad, you're late.
Now, question, question also, at the same time, are they doing a stamp receipt?
That's something that would have to be.
I, I, I'm just as.
And I understand it, but that, right now, it's my understanding, they don't, we'd have to take that up with Keith and get him to stamp stuff to show that it was received.
My understanding is that they have implemented that.
That was my understanding.
Okay, cool.
That thing, do you know?
If it comes in downstairs, yeah. But often, here's what happens a lot of times, I'm out somewhere, um, or it's shut under my, my door, I don't know how, or it's put on my desk by somebody, and, um, it's just shut on the desk, and I don't wanna get that out.
So, put, put a sign on it, do that.
Especially if I'm, I'm not.
Just write on the document, "Receive," whatever day and time it is that you got.
But, you know, that's another argument, it's, it's on the applicant, if it's an important document, it's on the applicant to get a receipt.
It has to be.
So, we don't have a receipt, we don't have a receipt system, and I think we should have a system. So, that, I'll talk to Keith about making sure that the applicant gets a receipt, what they do. What the receipt usually is, is they pay the fee, and they get a receipt when they pay the fee, cause when you drop off your application, you're supposed to pay your fee at that same time, and that's time dated.
But a pre-app.
And that's, that's what I was thinking with.
The pre-app, it isn't, that's a good point.
That what I'm saying, yeah.
But when, if, if I take a document to the IRS, they will date stamp it and give me the first page as a photocopy. They, the same thing could happen downstairs, huh?
I will let you make that suggestion, Tom Clark.
Just, just write, write the date and scribble your initial and photocopy the page.
Yeah, so what? They're doing taxes.
I mean, if, if, but you.
Why don't you just put it through the receipt system, even if there's no money involved, put it through the receipt system, it's stamped, it's noted as to what it is.
Yeah, and, and that would work as well. But that, that's all up to Keith letting you deal with it.
But then you have the electronic record, you don't have the file stuff, but it's all there.
And that takes to the question of, somebody else is saying, "We received, didn't receive," vice versa.
Yeah. And like you said, I think that's, that's a decision Keith can make in terms of, because that's how his office downstairs gets run.
Do you want me to send a memo on your behalf, or should?
Yes, yes. I think, I think on behalf of the planning board, we would like, we would like all applications and material dropped off dealing with the planning board to have some kind of, uh, date stamp acknowledgement on them.
Or, yeah, or receipt, or some kind of record that shows that it's been processed. But.
To eliminate further, uh.
Well, but we can't, we can't go hole in everybody's hand all the time.
Yeah, see, I think when we do our regulation, when, for those submittals, have, have them do a return receipt request.
Well, if I were submitting an important document, I would make sure everybody had something.
It's the applicant, I mean, that's why I tell the IRS I wanna base that.
You can always find a loophole somewhere to look hard enough, so, anyway, are we ready to adjourn?
Well, I have one question that I also have, since Bob is not gonna be here at the next meeting, and he can go bye-bye. Is there anything that you wanna possibly inform us on the sidewalk? Concerns?
Yeah, you, that's a good point, I'm glad you brought that on Marty, if somebody, uh, how was it, Andy?
Yeah.
Know, did, know what his last name is?
Yeah.
If somebody wants to give me a couple of bullet points.
Oh, I'll write a book.
If you look at, if you look at our meeting minutes that we just approved.
For Motley, the sidewalk?
No, for, for Bentley's campground. Issues that were raised by the board during that was fire protection, we brought up fire protection out there, and lack pressurized flows to the project. The need for increased bathhouse facilities to meet camp user needs, that was brought up out there. The desirability of diverting, now, this was different, Tom took a turn out there in talking with them. Issues raised by the board was the desirability of diverting construction traffic off of that Route One intersection where it was gonna be really busy onto Old Post Road, Tom didn't want anything out on Old Post Road during the, during the sidewalk, and it seemed to me that the board members there were in agreement.
Well, there was, yeah, there was.
I mean, towards a point.
Well, let's say that it's discussion, can't make decisions.
It's like there was discussion.
Yeah, no, 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 there was, yeah, that's what I'm saying, all of these, the visual buffering to adjacent residences, especially, there were two areas, I think, one at the lower parking area where they wanted to put in the form, one along that road for the width of the house, maybe, I don't know.
Traffic on that, uh, logging road.
Well, is it traffic or just buffering?
Traffic.
Traffic, yeah, and that was an issue.
And also, what, why stockpiles continue in there?
Yeah, there's stockpiling.
Huge amount of stockpiling.
Stockpiling, um, the other item was, um.
Turning lane.
The turning lane, we addressed upfront, the potential for, the need for turning right, lane, and requested additional information.
And, and specific location information on those four sites that are gonna be, are requested to be near the burn.
Yeah, that on top of the septic system, we'll call them the septic system sites.
Yeah.
Lake and Field.
And, uh, where you, you know, phone.
Emergency phone, okay, potential need for an additional one.
It was.
There was rest areas.
Yeah, we already, we were talking about that.
There, there was, there was the whole issue of fire, cause they were talking about using the pond that's gonna be on Bentley's property.
Oh, yeah, the potential.
This level is close to gonna, yeah.
And then they were talking about skid tanks.
Yeah, so they need to do something from a fire protection.
Yeah, well, that's the first thing that was issued, was raised at the last.
So, and, and that's an issue that I've, I raised within pre-conference, you know, one of many issues that I discussed. I told Marty, you're gonna have to get around Marty on this issue.
And I, I think whatever they come up with, we need to make sure that the chief agrees with it.
I've talked to the chief initially, we're gonna make it a letter from. And not being slack.
The chief?
No.
No, no, what I'm saying that is, okay, if we have this DVD two, okay?
Yeah.
And it's possibly gonna be developed, just not for campgrounds or anything else, okay? And you have the infrastructure along the way, and they say it after it becomes done, done, funk, uh, campground, or whatever else, I, something else wants to move in, and if you don't have the water there, they're not gonna put it there ready.
Um, that's very true, and then, actually, that, that might be an issue where that campground already, because they're, they're, like, half mile in.
Yeah.
And they have no water service calling in. There'll be resistance.
Can't talk too much about this.
I know, they're not, they're not here.
The applicant's not here.
I'm just saying, since Bob wasn't gonna be here, they're gonna.